All right. Good morning, everyone, and welcome here today to the Jackson County Board of Supervisors meeting for Tuesday, November fourteenth of two thousand and twenty-three. We are coming to an end. Uh, with me today, I have Mr. Don Drinker, Neil Plagueal, uh, B O R, Lisa, who is our auditor, and Ewan, our executive assistant, is in the background. And first on our agenda today is a public hearing on a right-of-way vacation. So at this time, we will open the public hearing. Are there any comments or concerns that anyone would like to address the board? Yes, sir. Would you, would you please state your name and?
Randy Shanahan.
Yeah.
And we're the property, one of the property owners.
Okay.
Uh, when we bought the property from my wife's dad twenty-seven years ago, we didn't know there was a right-of-way there, so we've been cutting the grass. There was a fence there that we actually took out. So the properties look, you know, you cut right up to the property lines. Um, and now we have a new neighbor, and I want to keep my dogs out of their yard. So we wanted to put in a fence. We went to get a permit, and we found out that there was a road there at one time.
How long would you rent property?
Twenty-seven, nineteen ninety-seven.
Who is your attorney?
Well, he's a judge now. And we had no idea there was a road there. When we got a variance to put up our garage in the backyard twenty years ago, nothing was ever brought up that we remember.
Sure.
And then we get the permit to put up the fence, trying to do the right thing, and then we find out we can't put it where we want.
Yeah. Well, that makes sense, Gary, and I appreciate your concern and what you're doing there. Um, there's no, Randy, I'm sorry, Randy. Uh, I, I, I appreciate, uh, is there opposition from your neighbor, I take it?
I called. I went over a couple of times and said, I want to show you what's going on, and he never came over to look at it.
Okay. Anyone else would like to approach the board concerning this right-of-way?
Well, I think one more part I want to add. We have kind of a driveway off the gravel road. It's really a driveway. It's grass. Then I have a gravel spot. And we have to move, if it's divided in half, um, then we will no longer be able to use that to pull it off the gravel road. Because it won't be enough room.
So.
We're gonna pull it up here.
So it, uh, maybe Todd can answer this, or Jayden. So if this is vacated, the, does it split?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, that's what the letter said. It would be split between both of us. And then we would lose our truck.
Lose part of that.
Part of that driveway. Wouldn't be enough room to pull a vehicle with a trailer.
This way you could put a fence up.
You're too far. Oh, no, sorry. That's seventeen coming from that. And you're, no, you're way too far. Um, I can give you a personal one.
Yeah, Melissa knows where it is.
Yeah.
There we go.
There you go. Yep, there you go.
The brown garage roof is ours. The white garage roof is the neighbor's. And if we have to go over eight feet and then leave probably a foot or so, so nothing gets put up against the fence, we'll lose that access we have as a gravel pad sitting right beside my garage. And then on the other side of the garage, there's a dip, and we went, we're not able to really pull in and out of there.
So.
First question would be, is that a permitted driveway?
No, it's just, we just pull in and out of there. It's not a permitted driveway. It was leveled when we bought it. We haven't changed it, added anything.
So what the, the code or the law says that it should be split in half.
Correct. So the research that we've done is that, uh, if we can't show that there's, there's two types of easement. One, that you would own fee title, like we have titled to the property. We can't find any documents to show that we have fee title. So this road, uh, the easement we have is through, uh, an easement. It's not, we don't own it. So when we have an easement, we disperse of the easement back to the adjacent property owners that we acquired the easement from. So.
So we assume that's fifty-fifty.
And like I said, when we go back and look.
I guess the only way you would really know for sure, if, if they still own title, is if they did a, a survey and have their property actually surveyed out.
There, we have a survey by Thomas Tucker. Um, but i- i- it's more about, how do I say this? How the easement was acquired. So if this was one property, when they acquired the easement, then there wouldn't have been any taking from two adjacent property owners. But usually, when we divest ourselves of, of, of easement, we split it between two adjacent property owners. There's two top property owners that own on both sides of the easement. We, we cut that easement in half, and they each get half.
Okay. Then can I ask a question about that? When my father-in-law bought it, and I believe sixty-nine, this was right on the, well, we thought was a property line.
And he's been cropped.
And he cropped and farmed it till we purchased it.
Mm-hmm.
So.
And it was showing in his name.
Yeah. She said it was showing in his name. So if it was a right-of-way, how would a, a fence got put or in what we assumed was a property line?
Uh, people pick fences in the right-of-way all the time.
Oh, I'm just asking. He's no longer with the staffs.
Yeah, so like, uh, I mean, if they, if somebody puts up, especially like with an old unused road right-of-way, they would, if they don't do any research and just put up the fence where they think it should go, that's where it ends up being, you know, basically. Um, but from the county's perspective, when, like I said, when we divest ourselves of easement, we, we split that between two adjacent property.
And I understand that, too. But to be, there was a fence there. That's why.
I guess my question is, is his property has a southern border.
Hmm.
The other property has a northern border. If it's an easement, that line, if it, if our easement was split evenly, that line would come right down the middle of that easement. Right?
Should, yeah.
But if that property line comes to the south edge of our easement, then it would make sense that it came all the northern property. Or if it, property line goes down the northern side of that easement, then it makes sense it all came out of the southern property. So I can't just automatically assume it's gonna get split down the middle, because to me, it all depends on where that property line comes down. Am I mistaken?
Well, the cer- the survey, the, the, from Thomas Tucker was done in nineteen ninety-seven, I think, most of it.
Yeah, we hired.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So it shows an ancient fence line now removed. That would be towards, to the north, towards the Shanahan property. And then it shows, um, a fence recently removed to the south of the, on the east side of the, uh, the two forty-first. So, um, I g- it, the, the land that was the tract that was surveyed and, and sold shows the existence of, existence of the easement. Um.
I wasn't aware of that.
Yeah.
Well, twenty-seven years ago, so I don't remember either, but I, I never knew about that or.
So you, you ordered this survey. You have this survey, correct? This is the current, current?
The, well, it's the most recent one.
We had just a property. We had to have a survey.
Sure. So the bottom line is that survey shows the property line in the middle? Per se?
No, that this doesn't show the property line in the middle, to my understanding. It shows, there's, there's property pins set um, at the northern edge of the easement.
Can you point that out, Chris?
Okay. Okay.
So this, this rectangular area is described in the survey um, by meets and bounds, and it, it's like sixteen oh five feet wide here, like fourteen point four six feet wide here. So it kind of tapers, but this is described, a legal description for this, and that's the part that we're, we're.
Vacating.
Vacate.
And so that survey claims that it's almost belonging to the southern neighbor, correct? Is that what you just told me? The pins are, the pins are on the northern edge? No.
No, it doesn't matter what the fences are. Th- this is described as right-of-way. If we vacate this, then a line would split this, this top half would go here, the bottom half would go there.
Right. But it's just a right-of-way.
It's just the right-of-way. If it was fee title, then it would be a different process to get rid of, because then we actually have to go across the process to sell it.
So I guess if we're just vacating the right-of-way, we vacate it, would it then be up to you two?
Property owners to dispute. Who is this?
I, I would say yes, that.
Fifty-fifty, no. But we, but because of the vacation, eventually this will become a taxable property. So that's why we, we say at the time of vacation that they need to tell us who is going to actually, in the end, own this property, so we can assess it.
Well, if we don't actually own the property, it would just revert back to prior owners.
We, we don't own the property.
Right.
For the record, so we researched, we can't show that we own it fee titled. There's ownership of that property that, that exists, and there's just an easement over that existing ownership.
Right. So if we vacate the easement.
It will go back to the prior ownership, however it was before the easement was established.
And we don't know that.
And that's what we can't find.
Okay. Is that something we could find out further, you know, down the road?
Well, I think if we vacate the easement, that's you guys doing title searches and.
But you have a document, though, that it's vacated.
Yes.
And you're telling, you're, for the record, you're saying that this person, in the end, will have title to this property, based on the vacation.
They already have title to it.
So what we have is an easement. Somebody has title to it right now.
Yeah, we don't have, we don't have title to our easement, unless we own it fee title.
You're right. So it is. I mean, however, if that was the state or the county, you can't have acquiescence. They cannot have acquiescence on this property.
They can't have.
That's why we're vacating.
Yeah, you can't have, uh, um, adverse possession through a right-of-way. So that's why, that's, you can't do that legally. So we, once we vacate our easement, then potentially, since you've been maintaining more than your half, potentially, again, I'm not an attorney, but you would need to talk to an attorney about your, your adverse possession rights, once the easement has been vacated. Um, however, I think that you still have to have that seven-year period or whatever. So I, again, I'm not an attorney, but yeah, use, you know, you petition to get the easement vacated. I think that's the correct first step to get this. If you want to start using it as property, that's your first step, is to have the easement be, uh, vacated.
Okay.
And then, then you, you know, can pursue other avenues to say, okay, we'd like to, you know, buy a strip from your neighbor, or however you want to do it, however you get to the solution of being able to have the property you want to maintain it the way you want to do it. But you can't really do that while the easement's still there, put that way.
So we're bringing a little more of the situation into it here, what we're talking about, actually, because we have no control over that.
Right.
All we can do is vacate that easement for you. And then you have the legal right to say, this, this much is, this much is mine, and this much is yours. Or, yeah, I want the whole thing, like Don says, so I, I, and then, and then we're gonna, Todd said, and then we're gonna buy the whole thing, or we're gonna do whatever. That's personal. That's up to you and your neighbor. All we're doing is vacating, so you have that option.
Okay.
Yeah, because, I mean, ideally, if you had good records, you would go back to when the easement was first acquired. And you could show who, how it was acquired. So if there's like half of it from the northern property and half from the southern property, you would basically, how, you're supposed to reverse engineer how it was acquired. So if it was acquired in a certain way, in a certain method, then you vacate it in that's the same method.
Right. Can I show you something in the picture?
Sure.
Not, not trying to be confrontation or anything, but the pin for Ron Felton's property is right here. And the pin for ours is down at the end of our driveway when Tom surveyed it, and that is a straight line. So wouldn't that show it came out of our property?
Uh, again, that's a legal counsel question to, where somebody that, yeah, I, I would say, yeah. I can look at the neighbors' line in town, too, and my lot should line up with the one across the street, but not necessarily true.
Yeah, so the, the thing that kind of makes me nervous is that, in the survey, it shows an ancient fence line, which would be the fence line north of that line you're talking about. So there was a fence line north of this straight property line, like you're talking about. There was a fence here, an ancient one that's culled out on the survey, which, again, I'm not a licensed land surveyor and I'm an attorney, and that's not something I feel like we can.
When he would have surveyed it, the fence would have still been there.
Yeah, so in his notes, it says ancient fence line now removed.
Oh, okay, then it would just shortly before that, right?
Not that it made a difference.
Yeah.
Like I said, I mean, you're still in my domain.
I think all we can do is vacate the, the easement.
Water's right.
And then it's up to you, it's up to you and your neighbor to figure it out at that point. And is there any other discussion, discussion in the contrary, or?
I guess.
Basically, going, going forward, sorry, going forward, then you would have to do kind of more legal actions before you could probably go forward with any fencing.
It'll be spring now before we can redo a fence.
Get eaten that way, you know. We just don't want you to run home and go, okay, we can put up our fence now, you know, type of.
No, we want to do it right. That's why we got a permit to start.
Yeah, no, and this is, I think, the correct way to do it is.
First step.
Is to get rid of, vacate the easement, and then go through whatever legal channels you need to, to just, if, if you're gonna, like, dispute where the, you know, where the easement should be vacated, in worst case, if, say, the board votes on the vacation of the easement, and we need to come back and correct it. Because right now, the, we're vacating it to the north property, it's half, and the south half, it gets pro- the half. And if, if through your title searches.
I don't know if we, how can we dis- discern that each get half? I think, I thought we just vacate the easement, and it's up to them to figure out who gets what, or how it divvies up. I don't, because we don't own it.
Yeah, I mean, that would be, you're, like I said, it's described, that's how we're vacating. It's based on its meets and bounds description, but we also have in there, it's our tend to, to vacate equal halves, if you will. And that's just because that's typically how it's done, put that way.
Okay, so our point is, right now, um, I see no purpose in that easement for our benefit, correct?
The way we haven't been using.
That's what we're talking about, this easement right now.
Yeah.
So as far as your situation to say, whose is what, and where is mine and yours, um, as I've always sounded to be friendly with somebody, you'll get a lot further. But I think if you can work this out easy enough, the way it looks, I don't think there's a lot of things in question here, and, and hopefully you can still u- utilize that area.
Who's paying taxes on it?
Nobody, right?
Um.
Right now, it should be paying. If there's, technically, you're not supposed to be taxed on easement.
Okay.
So once it's vacated, that'd be, uh, the assessor would have to figure that out.
It depends on who the easement goes to. I think whoever owns the easement is paying, whoever owns the property is paying taxes on it. Whoever's got the easement's not paying taxes on the easement. Yeah, that's a easement to the, so you can utilize it, but you're not paying taxes on it to utilize. Whoever easement is issued to, if, if I'm right about that. Again, I'm not an attorney either, but that's where this is going probably next for you, Randy, you know.
When we turn the right-of-way layer on Beacon, not that Beacon is a hundred percent.
Sure.
But it does show that it is on the right-of-way la- layer. The what? The blue.
The blue is the right-of-way.
And so, uh, when we turn the right-of-way layer on, on Beacon, it shows that this property and anything else here in blue is right-of-way. Now, again, you know, Beacon isn't a hundred percent, and I do, is not the auditor's office that maintains this. So I don't know when that was put into the right-of-way layer. I can't answer that. That's done through the assessor's office, but I can tell you that that's what this looks like.
So nobody's paying taxes on it.
Um, again, you'd have to ask the assessor's office, but it does show in the right-of-way layer.
Right.
Yeah. That was just added, like, a few months ago.
So is there any other statements or questions of, of regarding the easement?
Motion to close the public hearing.
Uh, motion and second to close the public hearing. All those in favor say aye. Aye, opposed. Motion carried. Now, we are, um, still considering vacation of either.
No, I guess the only labels that I have concern in there is you have to kind of go in fifty-fifty, because I don't know how we can discern that. You know, I think we vacate the right-of-way, and it goes, it has to be litigated, figured out, surveyed, whatever. I think that's something they need to in that way.
But I think we can vacate it to nothing. Who are you vacating it to?
We don't have to, we're not transferring property. So we tell you, I think I'll check with John Keys, but so we describe our easement. This, we have a legal meets and bound description for the easement. We're gonna vacate it based on the same description. So here's it is. It's, it's, it's described from a quarter-quarter section, you know, point of beginning. And here's our easement. It has so many acres, or we're gonna go back and retrace that same steps and say, we're gonna vacate this. The same description of the easement when it was acquired, it's the same description when we vacate. We don't have to, I don't, we technically don't have to determine who it goes back to. We're just vacating our easement, but I will check with John. I mean, typically, you would a lot, typically, you would state that it's vacated back to the adjacent property owners, or if it was acquired from a single property. But I don't know if you technically have to do that.
So are we saying the easement and the right-of-way is the same thing? Because that's what this says, is the right-of-way vacation.
We have the right-of-way via.
Via. We're talking about the exact same thing.
Hmm.
So you're just vacating the, the right-of-way easement?
Yeah, so this is a, I am from the Iowa DOT. It says the resolution must state the portions of the road vacated, remaining open, or if the vacation proceedings were dropped. Describe any objections or claims for damages and how they resolve. Um, and the following must, may also need to be addressed, and knowing paying damages, blah, blah, blah. Uh, vacated right-of-way held by fee title must be sold under Iowa Code Section three oh six point two-two. It's, that is not the case, as far as we know. County may agree to move any drainage structures or clear shape any, like, if you have a culvert or a bridge, you have to do something positive to divest yourself of that. Um, and then it talks about the federal classification. Um, if there's, like, if it was, if this was a federal aid route or farm-to-market route, then we have to go in and update our classification and our route. So that's basically all it says.
My question is, is if you don't give half and half, what does that do for the Shanahans today to get title to it? To, to have a document to, to receive title to it?
Yeah, so what would typically, like, you would have your your deed, and it would describe your property, and then at the very end, it would say, subject to whatever easement. So once the easement is vacated, then that little section on your deed that says you're subject to point five acres of whatever easement, that goes away, and now your property is the whole property.
That's the way you're are, are we at that point in the meeting here?
We were at that point of the meeting of vacating the right-of-way slash easement as presented. As far as the title part of it, I guess that's further investigation on the owner's part.
Well, I guess, why don't we, just to be safe, let's not, I, I would recommend that we don't necessarily take action on the resolution. And do you have your, your deed, copy of your deed? I would probably want to, can you make me a copy or get a copy of that? And then, and then that will give me a little better, uh, understanding. Like, if your property is described based like this, um, and it does not include the section that we're trying to vacate, then I think that, that makes me feel like, then this is fee title. I mean, if their deed doesn't have it, and who's this? Holt's? casual, casual to the south doesn't have it.
Most of the table this, and you guys get together and figure it out.
Okay, so I, I would suggest that you contact your own legal counsel also. And with, with the description, if it's leaps and bounds, as part of your legal description, so what does that do for our public hearing? Does that do anything?
We closed it.
We closed it. I know. Do we have to have another one if something changes?
No, you've had a public hearing. You've, the, any.
On the vacation.
Any claims for damages and all that, those get listed here. Since there weren't any, then now you can just take action, basically.
Okay.
And technically, since this doesn't affect any traveled way, you don't even, we didn't even have to have a hearing, but we just do it to be safe. Though, you're required to have a hearing when it affects the traveled way of an open road. So like, if you're gonna close or vacate a road that's open for the public to travel on, you have to have a hearing. In this case, this road isn't open for the public to travel on. It's just unused easement.
Okay. I do have a motion on the table.
A motion to the table this, so they can figure out the.
I will second that.
I have a motion and second to people, the vacation of the property, so further information can be obtained.
Get a copy of theirs.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carried.
If they don't have.
I appreciate you coming in and stating your thoughts and opinions, and hopefully you get it ironed out. We'll take care of it.
Thanks for your time.
Yeah, good night. Have a good day.
Thank you.
Yeah, if we can't find a record, we're gonna have to be, not even turning involved, because I don't know how that, I mean, if their, if their deed doesn't come in, butt up with the other property.
Okay, so.
You want a fee title.
And still on our agenda is Mr. Todd Keeney, our Jackson County engineer. And we're up for your agenda.
Nothing very easy.
Uh, that'd be way too easy.
What's the record? You're a little better. I'd say that. Uh, so we got a easement, or excuse me, easement, utility permit uh, per century electric link to relocate fiber as part of our bridge replacement project on one hundred and eighth Fourth Avenue. Or get out of the way of destruction. For one of, I think, one of three. I think there's three, yep. One of three utilities we gotta have moved.
Is that our expense?
No. Because we, as long as we notify, we're six months in advance? I think so, which, all the notifications have been a while ago, so. It was not at our expense.
So, would you?
Second.
Motion and second to approve the utility permit as presented. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries.
Me? Uh, next one is shop reorganization. So, um, we, due to the, you know, the open positions that we've been filling and posting, and people bidding around, um, the parts and inventory position right now is vacant. Um, and before I post it, I wanted to consider, talk about um, taking the parts and inventories responsibilities and putting those under the shop foreman's responsibilities. And then, um, not posting the parts and inventory's position, but, and then posting an extra, another mechanic's position. So we're not adding any staff. We're just restructuring, so we have two full-time, what I would call, working mechanics, and then the shop foreman in the shop. Um.
So right now, you have two mechanics and a parts and inventory guy.
We have a mechanic, parts inventory, and a shop foreman.
Okay. So you want basically two.
Our shop foreman would still be a working shop foreman, too?
Yes, but the amount of, like, actual mechanic work he's gonna have to do should, should be reduced, because he, he is gonna be doing the parts inventorying, ordering parts, that kind of stuff. So he still would have to do some mechanic work, but it's gonna be reduced.
Aka, people on vacation.
Yeah, so he's gonna have to fill in, but he'd be more of what I would call a manager, less mechanic. Like, right now, he's, I would say, more of a mechanic than a manager.
Parts inventory pays scale and mechanic pays scale the same, or is there?
Oh, that's a good question. Uh, I'll have the union contract with me. Um, it's gonna be similar.
And as far as rewriting job description?
Got it done. What's in red is the only, the only change um, that gets added. The red comes from the parts and inventory specialist job description, and going under the shop foreman's. We did the same thing in Clinton County, um, just seems to work out better, especially if, you know, we're gonna look at having the shop be involved with, uh, all the preventative maintenance work. Instead of having the owners of that all be on the operators. Um, so the idea would be, like, somebody in one of the satellite sheds needs to be greater maintenance. The operators there, plus the one of the mechanics from the shop is there, doing that. And then we'd also have a shop, uh, mechanic still at the Coca shop, if something came in or needs to be worked on. Um.
Sounds logical. I mean, again, I, I guess I would be interested in, like Don said, the pay structure.
It'd be, it'd be a minimal effect.
Yeah.
You want a motion on that, or?
I don't.
You need.
Just.
You have to know.
Yeah, I think I just was kind of, gonna talk about it. I, I guess I don't really need a, so I guess a motion, maybe would be a, to motion to post a mechanic's position and not fill the inventory, parts inventory for the position, I guess would be.
It would be getting rid of it.
Well, we'd still leave it open. We would leave it open until we do the union negotiations, and then at that time, we don't, it's not permissive. We could just say, hey, we're eliminating this, this, and this, basically. Uh, I talked to Becky about this earlier. Um, right now, um, they could potentially, uh, uh, I don't say grieve it, but tech, tech, technically, this would be temporary until the new union contract is. Until the new union contract is negotiated and signed, and then all that language about. Transferring a job classification, which in my opinion should be in there, we can remove. It's not subject to bargaining, it's permissive, so we can just take it out of the.
Cause it almost seems like you're just basically making parts of inventory kind of like an additional duty.
It's an additional duty to the shop foreman and we're not, I don't wanna obviously lay anybody off or have people. Lose their jobs, obviously, but we're just creating a, we're creating another mechanics position and putting parts of inventory under the shop. For me, it makes, it just makes more sense.
Uh, so you need action is to have permission to post. For the mechanic position.
Yeah, I guess it would be. A motion to post it, an additional mechanic's position and not to post the open parts and inventory position.
Make that motion then.
I'm excited as long as it's okay and clear to HR. Violate any union, whatever, you know.
Have a motion and second to approve posting for the mechanic position and not posting for the parts and inventory position as presented. All those in favor, say aye. I oppose. Motion carry.
Alright, and then just real quick on the day labor bridge work. So there's three of the seven are completely done. Two of the seven have a dex port, one should be open probably this week, the other one, the following week. And, uh, one, all the piling is driven on and then we, the last one, they'll be closing this week, so. No run along, I would anticipate. First, first or second weekend, December being completely done with all of them, so. Seven bridges, that's a lot to get done in one year.
Yeah, and we appreciate our local contractor that's uh, working diligently with that too and you guys is. Staying right after it, uh, you guys, your staff. Uh, that's major improvements. Um, you have actually chopped reorganization, but that's what we talked about discussing, correct?
And then one quick too, so, uh, the state of. Iowa county. We, there's a first round submittal of projects that we would include as part of the raise grants for the the bill. Uh, submitted to the federal government. We submitted the Iron Bridge. That got. Made it through the first round into the second round, so now we're in the process of there's a second round questions we have to submit. But I think the chances are good that it will make it into the final submittal, which will go to as part of our raise grant application to. Federal Highway, um. That's a big bridge, it's probably what, four and a half, five million? That will, it's uh, that will get eighty percent funded, so you may, um. We may, uh. Have to discuss this further, but so what happens is you get selected, the project gets selected, it goes into a group of probably around. Fifteen or twenty projects. And then they, we have to hire a consultant to prepare the the grant package and all that. So we may end up having to do a budget amendment down the road, but it, you know, could be as much as ten to twenty thousand dollars just for us. For our portion of the grant package preparation, so. One of those things where you gotta spend money to get money.
Can we briefly touch on the email you sent out about the lighting grant?
Oh, yeah, so. The destination lights that we're gonna do, we submitted, uh, Jayden prepared the T SIP application. Um, the committee reviewed that and, uh. We were awarded, well. We were recommended to be awarded, the the commission has to act on it. It's really, I don't wanna say it's a rubber stamp, but they. For the most part, they take the recommendation from the DOT and the committee. And we we will get about one hundred and forty eight thousand dollars towards the destination lights replacement, so.
So that's some good news we'd like to put out there, so, um, one hundred and forty eight thousand is substantial and it gets us lighting and our intersections. On paved roads, yeah, because, uh, there's some out there, they're dark. Actually, it gets dark at five o'clock in the afternoon.
Hopefully by this time next year, all the paper intersections will have lighting, so.
Appreciate it. Good news. Thanks, guys. Any questions for Todd?
Thanks, guys.
One last thing, so I have my budget. Kinda looked like I was in pain. The budget, my work session is the twenty first. I don't, how much information do you want beyond what was, you know, submitted, just whatever I feel is appropriate?
Uh, explanation, I mean, if there's something in there that's gonna draw a red flag to me, I want an explanation.
I don't know what goes on in the head of yours. I don't know where your red flags come from, but.
How about you just explain your budget and then we'll.
Well, I'll, I think I'll probably just talk about. The day labor projects we have and the road projects and the equipment. Then after that, I do have the the major line item differentials and we can talk about those, but. I won't get into the five-year program until next year. I think this time last year, we talked a little bit more about the five-year program in general, but I'll skip that part.
Well, and we talked about some equipment that we were also discussing, but yeah.
And we talked about the, spent a lot of time on the road or shaping discussion and all that too. I don't think we'll necessarily need to do as much of that either, so.
Alright, I think I seen, uh, Mr. Keys in the hall. Is that correct? So are there any visitors or citizens with us today that would like to approach the board? I don't see any, any on the Zoom.
Did you do Julie already?
I was Julie's on the schedule after John. Which doesn't matter to me, we could go take Julie. You wanna run up here quick? I was just looking through my book here and I know I read the the proposal or the, and I don't.
And it's signed.
I don't have a copy of it.
Um, well, I'm not sure it's gonna work, so what it is, um, we actually had a mat clinic yesterday at the United Church of Christ. Um, we did it. Kind of a scaled down version, they didn't bring their mobile unit, they came in a van. Um, and United Church of Christ has agreed to host it and there's this. Okay, there's, it's, there were, there's a suggestive donation of fifty dollars to help cover utilities and wear and tear. Um, they can't take rent because of their bylaws and I'm not sure you can do donations, so we might get it in cast because of language. So, I mean, it fits the math, it fits the improved uses very nicely. I coded it, it's a B one medication assisted treatment. Um, but they can't take rent and I don't know that you can make a donation, so I mean, we might be stuck and so I had emailed the land about maybe we need to. Just pull this one and figure out the language.
Well, we sure is, uh, don't wanna do something that we're not.
Yeah, um, yeah, I don't know that you can make.
There's a legal authority to do that.
Um, and I guess when I wrote it. The person who's, you know, said, you know, donation fifty dollars for rent, I have to cover, you know, utilities, I wrote it up and then they called back. We can't take rent, it has to be a donation and that's why I'm like, oh, so I'm not sure we can do this.
Well, I guess you come back when you have more.
Would John be the one to answer about donations?
I guess you have that.
Church of Christ can pay rent.
Well, no, their bylaws apparently do not allow them to take rent. I can speak to this as a member of the church, we can't, but it just occurred to me. We can, we can count it as a donation. As no matter what it's called on someone else's pen. I just don't wanna.
I, would it work better as a fee per service kind of thing where instead of paying a monthly stipend? It's like per event, is there a way?
I mean, that's. I don't know how you guys, I think, I think Julie's saying that you guys really aren't allowed to. To don't make donations to places, is that accurate? But if you just write a check and we and we enter it as a donation. Um, cause what you were suggesting is each month that it's hosted, because again, if you don't have people, there may not be one, this is only for winter months. Um, because ideally they'll bring the bus when it's decent out. Um, so you're looking at six months potentially, I mean, it's Iowa, I can't guarantee any weather. And they would send an invoice every month that they were there, so you know, we could put it on paper, but just, I wanna make sure we're not doing anything. Sketchy with the language.
They've been doing this on their own in the past, is that correct?
This was the very first one ever, we've never done it.
To me, that's a coordination, I I'm saying really important. And then you work the verbiage between you, John. I don't know how that works, because it almost sounds like it's gonna have to be requested for every single. I don't know.
Well, we really don't know. I mean, we don't, we don't know how many things are gonna be here or what.
You know, and then, or could you just do a lump sum for the year, one, whatever months it is? The church has been very flexible. Just something to help them cover their.
Do it at the end of the. Winter season. Once you get, if you get the verbiage figured out. Do it at the end of winter season, so March, April.
Depending on the weather.
That way you know how many you've actually had. Or that.
We still won't know any actual expenses, I mean, we're estimating some funds for electricity.
Electricity, gas, heat, whatever their utilities are.
I mean, no way you would know actual expenses as if you made them. Do a meter reading.
And that's it, so fifty dollars seem nominal.
To me, you'll look at it kind of like a fee per service, not, we're doing this for utility. It's it's fifty bucks for us to come and do this and at the end of the season when we're done in the winter, we came this many times, times.
Well, I would say Julie come back with more info and whatever.
We figured out there's a problem, I was already on the agenda, so we had to do it, so I hope you have a great day. We'll talk to you.
Alright, our attendant is Mr. John Keys. Good morning again, John. And we have John scheduled to discuss our leases, head start leases. With A-CAP and or. The Andrew Jackson Care Facility lead also. Head start and A-CAP.
The. Leases are a little bit niche, that's the good news. Uh, Jennifer and I, uh, our insurance agent met yesterday. Talking specifically about a language that we want to make sure that the course of the county is covered. And, uh. The expenses are a portion between, uh, us. And the tenants. Now. Uh, just to review.
Are we, this is for me talking about one lease in particular at this time?
What I'm doing is, right now, we have a hot spot of different kinds of leases and different formats. We're gonna have a standard business leases recognized throughout the state of Iowa. And every time you look at a lease, whether it's A-CAP, whether it's Pine Valley, whether it's Lord. I I mean, whether it's the, uh, Fair Board, um, you're just gonna look familiar to you. And we're just gonna make changes as soon as fit, as fits the individual, uh, uh, arrangements. So we're going through, I'm going through line by line, all these contracts and looking at everything. And so we're gonna upgrade and update the leases. It's gonna have the same language, I'm not changing the terms. Uh, we're just, uh, making sure that we have, uh, everything in there to make sure that the county's protected.
Okay, I like to, I like to, a harsh portion of it that's standardized. But then we've also discussed some terms and I I don't know that I have them wrote down, but I know.
Yep. That's what I was gonna go over with you right now. Um, so now with regards to, um. Oh, I got notes with Jennifer in with the board, okay. With regard to the Andrew Jackson Care, Care, uh, facility also known as, uh. Um, you had, I put in a two percent increase.
Correct.
And, uh, also a term for five years.
Um, I thought we decided three.
I like longer the better, but.
I do too, I just feel that a lot of things change in that amount of time and I don't know that we can't just renew it after three years, but. Uh, I'm just saying it's five years seems like a long term.
As a business owner that has rented buildings by lease for five years until I decided to hold.
So again, there's a clause in there that same, anybody can opt out after sixty days, so I guess, yeah.
I think right now it's written ninety, but we can make it sixty.
Ninety, whatever it is, it does the better, we can opt out. Or they can.
Two percent for three years, that's what makes you.
Change is easily made.
Farm is three years. But again, the terms in there as far as. Uh, operational equipment, if you will. You know, somehow we had to somehow standardize and say, hey. You know, if if it's as easy as the building and the components on the walls and the structure is ours, the rest of it is yours. I I don't know if it's that easy.
For insurance purposes, it is. Uh, we can do that.
So I mean, we have an agreement with Andrew Jackson with some of the equipment is fifty fifty.
The contents and the operation is gonna be their liability and they're gonna carry that and we, we of course are gonna ensure, uh, the building and grounds.
Makes sense to me. I mean, it's, any, anything, you go into a business, anything, and the equipment usually the. Um, responsibility of the leasing or responsible, whatever business entity that they're doing.
What was that, giving them rights though to stuff that we own? Is that giving them rights to stuff that AKA we own, like in the kitchen area? Or this, what was it, a washing machine that we just bought fifty fifty with them?
So, I guess going forward, if we're standardizing this again. If this broke down, it broke down, it ain't no worth value to us, so I, I guess you want one, you buy one, I don't know.
But if, okay, they're gonna break, we're, they get into this lease, we're in it a year and they decide they're gonna break it. They get to clean out your kitchen then, of everything you own in there?
No, we we still have the terms of. The terms that we put in there are very specific to who owns what, um, that's still in there.
Okay, that's what I was asking.
And I was just talking for insurance purposes, um, if it's attached to the building, it's part of the building, it's. If it's not, it's contents and they would, they would insure that, but you know. Um, and these are questions that, uh, that.
So you're talking insurance wise versus what they have to ensure versus what we ensure?
Right, right. Um, it's, we still have the same terms we had in there, I was just gonna transfer those over. As to who owns what, who's gonna take care of what. Uh, maintenance, of course, where we agreed to do the parking lot and the road. And it has almost everything else, there's a few exceptions. There's some shared responsibilities.
I guess at what point do we get a, an updated lease that we can make action on that's not gonna present to somebody else?
I have, we're having a, I have a final meeting with Jennifer, um, this. It was Wednesday, I think we pushed it back to Thursday and after that, we're both gonna look at it and she. Puts her blessing on the language that we have and I can get it to Luanne and she can get it to you guys.
And, uh, did we discuss terms of the other one, actually? Percentage?
We talked about a four percent increase?
Yeah.
I think so.
And, um. The end kind was staying the same?
The same or is this percentage just same?
It stayed the same, it never changed. Past ones never changed. And in your lease things, we had talked about.
Access to the building.
Yeah, key codes. Or whatever. If they're changing, they.
Yep, got that.
So, I mean, yeah, so they don't change things without our knowledge or hand keys out, without our knowledge.
Beyond all of our leases, I would say.
And, uh, I'm doing up also agreement with, uh, uh, Together with Build. What I'm gonna put out there, what I'm gonna provide, is not only a lease agreement with the newly formed or will be formed board, but I think the board needs to have, uh, articles of creation, and I can prepare those too, if, if the Fair Board chooses to use them.
Is that like by laws, you mean?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So it's an actual legal entity and people authority designing. And that's, that's, he actually almost had that done. So, um, there, those will be those two documents, and I think that once they've got a, a formal entity, uh, to legally enter into an agreement, then we, then we um, replace the, the temporary agreement we have with, with one that is updated and sets out responsibilities and who owns what, who has what space.
Okay, yeah, I'd like to see some, I know we had a meeting with with a few of the, according to regarding, you know, the, the board and the and the responsibilities and insurance and, and whatnot, and I have not seen a draft yet.
We talked about December fifteenth on that, but I wanna get that to you along with the other contracts, um, hopefully by the end of the week.
Be awesome.
That is good. I just wanna meet with Jennifer and, uh, we'll go over the, uh, insurance language, make sure that's respectful.
Appreciate it, yeah, the sooner the better for us, at least, as I know we're basically running on a month to month here right now, so.
Got it, we are on.
Alright, appreciate it, John.
You're welcome, thank you.
Have a good day.
Did anybody ever bring back the State of Iowa agreement at the the Pine Valley or whatever?
We talked about that, we decided that was good.
So did we ever take action on it, has it ever been brought back to the board?
I, I think it was, it was tabled at that time, when Nathan was gonna check into, um, you talked to Nathan, correct?
Yes.
Yeah, I don't think it was ever brought back to us, so.
Because there was a difference in opinion on a management agreement or twenty eighty or like, what, what got presented to us, what didn't have the same wording as what his email.
Well, we've determined that we have complete. Um.
Right.
We have insurance company, we've determined that, yes, and that's.
Yeah, that's what we were concerned as far as somebody going in there, hunting or get injured.
Taken care of.
Yeah.
Yeah.
No, and after speaking with Mr. Kimber down in Green Island, too, the same type of agreements are with the state and feds actually down there, so.
Yeah.
So, yeah, okay, yeah, we can get that wrapped up too, maybe, um, Luanne, you write a note of that to get ahold of Nathan, so he comes back and presents that to us. Sooner than later.
Yep.
Alright.
Yeah, alright.
We'd like to wrap it up a little bit. Thanks, John.
You're welcome.
Have a good day. Alright, so, it appears that we are down to it's Lori Rowling, our Jackson County zoning administrator. Good morning, and we're looking for an update.
Yep, and I was told to set a land speed record and not take too much of your time today.
You did, so good.
I don't know. But, yeah, so I, uh, I gave you enough thumb drive here, um. Just loaded it.
Uh, got your email, you last night, or this morning, when was it?
Um, no, that was a different email, um, but this was, uh, um, last week? Was it Friday? I think it was, or Thursday, rather? So, I'm gonna send it out. Uh, I did go out, um, I had the original complainant, he called to check on the status. And when we initially talked, I did send out the courtesy letter and not the official notice.
This is on one fiftieth again?
It is.
Alright.
And I really can't see any improvement. The old, um, I don't know if it's a Cutlass or an old Monte Carlo, is still sitting, sitting there with stuff on it. Kind of rode into the area, um, some of the crates and stuff are still uh, still there, these are, the ones with the leaves on it are the ones that were, uh, uh, taken in May. And then the ones without leaves are the ones, you can see the, the car doors are still stacked against a tree. Um, and then here, scroll back down a second, or, no, that's a good one. Uh, you really can't see it, but there's an old disassembled, like, small Ford tractor, or, excuse me, smelt down your tractor, like a Model A B, that's just all parts, and the tires are, rear tires are sitting up against it, but it's oh, so overgrown with brush, you can hardly see it, uh, and you can see like that crate's still there, not convinced the other red tractors moved, but I'm not, that's not one of my big concerns. Uh, but the trailers, the vehicles, looks like maybe some of the trailers moved, have moved around or moved out. Um, I did get, um, I talked to the law center to get information on what vehicles might be registered to that owner, and what's might not be registered, but without being on the property, I can't tell which these trailers might be, the ones that are not registered. I just wanna know how you guys wanna, you guys are the ones that are gonna appeal the phone calls on this.
So, do we even have any contact with him?
No, he never made contact.
Somehow, I think we need to try to make contact with this individual, say we need a, um, rearrangement anyway.
So try to do that before we send out the sheriff's, no, the notice through the sheriff.
I know there's been stuff moved around there, you will see different cars there periodically, but um, and knowing, I, and I know that just because I drove by, and you see a vehicle there, something that, um, I'm at the point, send it, send it an official notice, I mean, how many times can you try to call or contact somebody before?
I don't, I don't have enough, did you say you had contact information for him at one time, like?
You know, it's been a long time, Lori, yes, and I can say that I think I know where he maybe works up north somewhere, and can't remember who I talked to, I would say a neighbor.
A neighbor of my head?
Yeah, I will touch base with you a little later.
Okay, so.
I believe he was served at work the last time.
Uh, that could be possibly true.
You know, I'm, I'm willing to work with people if I need to.
Yeah.
Uh, I mean, that's always the best option, if you can.
Again, we're getting into months where we don't know what's gonna happen, but if there's two feet of snow on top, that's gonna be a tough deal, but, uh, yeah, I guess there's been enough time, it's been long enough that I, like I said, I forgot.
Yeah.
So, uh, whatever the board wishes to do at this point is.
I drive, I drive by periodically, so I know there's been action, activity there, I went, oh, hey, one time, I was like, oh, they're cleaning up, things removed, but then but again, again, consistent and defiable. Yeah, in that regard, I don't care if it's Green Island or Leisure Lake, or this property or any property, has to be consistent and definable. It can't just be like, it looks trashy, it has to be this is there, and I know it's impossible to list everything. You know, refuse who you are, you know, you know. You know, because you get into semantics, I don't think it's garbage, that kinda stuff, but.
I know, like I've said in the past, there's a few things here that you kinda have circled that I'm like, hey, if this is a farm, I don't consider them.
Yeah, and I guess I don't consider this two acre parcel a farm.
It's still built, depends on that. At some point.
He probably owns a potato fort too, but I don't know that makes him a farm.
You know, so to have, you know, like you know, I'm gonna call outside the railroad ties, as long as they're stacked neat. I don't consider that necessarily a nuisance, because that could be usable.
Well, obviously, some of it is an isolate, and it starts with a complaint, and we did have a complaint.
Can we do, and assign complaint?
Like Don said, we should follow up with policy procedure, whatever we have in place, and, and move on with it, yeah.
Okay.
So, I will stop.
As if you don't have enough to do.
Oh, Don, you don't even know.
I don't know.
You're supposed to be short and sweet.
I know, oh no, we don't even start going into my therapy sessions here with what's going on.
Okay.
So, just, just tried to follow up, is that what you're saying? I know Don made a
Yeah, he did.
Recommendation.
If there was a motion there, or if there was just a recommendation, or?
I said, following policies and procedures, if the next step, if, if you tried to contact them so many times, and on or unable to, and what's the next step? The next step is sending a notice?
Yeah, I just did the letter, because I didn't have anything with a phone number, let me do a deeper dive, and if I can't find anything, then I'll do the notice.
Maybe some information is.
Okay.
Well, I'd have to look back through my bill of subs, then again, six months or better.
Yeah, because I think there was action on this, I don't know, I think it was not during the previous zoning administrator, but the one before that. So that goes back to at least two thousand twenty twenty or twenty one. Probably twenty. So, anyway, so thanks, guys.
Alright, yeah, have a good day.
Oh, sure.
We are down to Luanne? That's another thing we never really finished addressing, one of our fireworks.
If I don't regret, we never got back to that.
No, it comes early with you.
Yeah.
Never stops.
Good morning.
Good morning. Yes, Tom Yearwood asked me, we were bringing you back to it, and I said, that's anybody's guess at this, because there's a lot going on, so. Okay, calendar this week, this afternoon at four o'clock. Is, um, the Cook and River Watershed Municipal Authority Executive Committee meeting by Zoom for Don. On from five to seven tonight, is the Community Foundation of Jackson County's fortieth anniversary celebration. For any of you that wanna go, I think that's across the street at Innovate One Twenty. Wednesday, November fifteenth, at nine AM, is an IRIS meeting, printed in, in, um, in Dubuque or by Zoom. By the clock, tomorrow night is an ECIA council meeting, in Dubuque or by Zoom for Mike. Thursday, November sixteenth, at nine AM, is a Housing Trust Fund meeting by Zoom for Ninn. At noon, um, is tentatively a Bellevue Leadership Committee meeting by Zoom for Mike. And at six o'clock that night, is the Limestone Bluffs R C and D meeting by Zoom for Don. Friday, November seventeenth, at noon, I tentatively have a DCAT meeting on here for Mike, um, either into it or by Zoom. On Monday, November thirtieth, at one PM, um, I tentatively have a Workforce Board meeting, um, for Don in Muscatine or by Zoom. And at one thirty, we have a Waste Authority meeting for Mike, that's no longer tentative, that's been confirmed. Three o'clock that afternoon is a, um, Mental Health and Disability Services Governing Board meeting in Davenport. Um, for Jack or Ninn. At three o'clock that afternoon, is also the Compensation Board meeting downstairs. At six o'clock that night, is a zoning commission meeting in the credit room or by Zoom for any of you that wanna attend that. And at seven o'clock that night, is Together We Build meeting, for any of you that wanna go to that. Our next regular meeting will be on Tuesday, November twenty first. Uh, we will plan to start with an early budget session, also that day at eight thirty. Um, at ten thirty that morning, we're gonna go into budget, more budget work sessions. Five o'clock that night, is a Conservation Board meeting, I just got that confirmed, in Hurstville, I think Ninn usually goes to those. Six o'clock that night, is a Jackson County Economic and Lions meeting, in the Coke Center by Zoom for Don. And at seven o'clock, is a Board of Health meeting, in the Credit Room or by Zoom, and that's for Ninn. But had to get on that mailing list. Okay, the only other action I have to make, um, is a request for a fireworks permit from Tom Yearwood um, for New Year's Eve. That's why we have the paperwork in your file. In the app, it's the same place he always shoots fireworks. So I'm looking for approval of a fireworks permit for him.
Motion to second to approve the fireworks permit for Tom Yearwood, as presented, for those in favor, say aye.
Okay.
I oppose, same sign, motion carried.
He did tell me that he ran into Brian Peterson, who's the other fireworks person we talked to, Phil Upin's wingman. And they had a nice conversation, and, and they were talking about drafting a possible ordinance for us or something, I said, go ahead, draft it, bring it in.
Oh, yeah, I think, yeah, again, we had some very good, very good input in the work session we had from the public and from professionals, if you will. Um, that had good input, that knows more than the prospect, I suppose, if you want to call it that, but yeah, we'd like to have it, um, both do something in the first part of the year, and maybe get something put together, yeah.
Wait, when we get the budget done.
We get the budget completed.
And then it'll be time to do it anyway, because in March, they start asking for permits for the fourth.
Right, and, and our attorney is gonna be involved, and he's a little busy with the leases right now, so let's put it on our agenda, or put it on this unfinished business anyway, is it on there?
It just as we talk budget, however, just for timelines of the week, in March of the nineteenth, eighteen through the twenty second, it will be in San Antonio, and I don't know how our sun's consultation will go as far as being able to zoom in or not, depending on when they're competing and stuff, so I don't know how that affects the budget approving process.
So we have to be certified by when?
Well, we have to have everything done, well, I mean, there's a lot of different timelines this year with budgets. But by March fifteenth, we have to have the cities, the schools, the county has to have everything to the auditor's office. Because by March twentieth, I have to have this mailing out.
Yeah.
So hopefully, we've got the bulk of everything.
Hopefully, we're kinda wrapped up, or have most of.
We'll take.
I'll just throw that out there, that was.
We should be we should be in pretty good shape.
Do the best we can, if we have to accommodate a, a time change or something, we can probably do that. Alright.
Hey, go ahead.
Thank you. Lisa? The biggest thank to you, Ben.
Uh, you know, the first part is not bad, it's the second part that, yeah. So, this morning, I needed to approve the minutes of the November seventh, twenty twenty-three board proceedings, as written by Audrey Smith, and authored publication in the official newspapers. So moved.
Sorry, good.
Motion to second to approve the minutes of November seventh, twenty twenty-three board proceedings as written and publication, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carried.
Motion needed to accept and place on file the Veterans Affairs Commission meeting minutes for the October eighteenth, twenty twenty-three meeting.
Motion to second to approve the, um, Better of the Parish Commission meeting minutes for October eighth, twenty twenty-three, as presented, all placed on file, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carried.
Motion needed to approve Resolution Number nine nine seven dash eleven, that fourteen dash twenty twenty-three. For an operating transfer from the General Fund, oh one thousand, to the Secondary Roads Fund, the twenty thousand fund, for fifty thousand dollars, effective November fourteenth, twenty twenty-three.
Any explanation?
Um, uh, it's just an annual thing, we're mandated by law to do that, so it's, that's the way that it was budgeted, and we are mandated to do it.
Thank you, Saka. Motion to second to approve Resolution nine nine eight dash one one dash one four.
Nine nine seven. Because with you not passing the original resolution this morning for the vacation, um, I am using Resolution Number nine nine seven for this one, and my next motion will be for nine one eight.
Right. As the number as presented? I'll vote in favor, first, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? To carry.
Motion needed to approve Resolution nine nine eight dash eleven dash fourteen dash twenty twenty-three. For an operating transfer from the Rural Services Fund, eleven thousand, to the Secondary Roads Fund, twenty thousand, for six hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars, effective November fourteenth, twenty twenty-three. Kind of the same thing, it is, so moved.
Say, second.
Motion to second to approve Resolution nine nine eight one four dash one one dash one four dash twenty twenty-three, as presented. Uh, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carried.
There was the agenda for, uh, the canvas of last week's city school election at ten o'clock, so I think it's appropriate that we do that now. Um, you know what, actually, last, last week was a pretty, pretty good turnout. Um, I think the Easton Valley bond question pushed a lot of voters to the to the polls on election day, so overall, we had a seventeen percent turnout, which is pretty good. And I'm looking at the numbers right now, as far as where the highs and the lows were at, but for a city school election, I consider this a pretty good turnout. One of the things that happens throughout the county is that there were One of the things that happens throughout the county is that there were several. Cities um, that relied on the write-in ballot to elect their next um. Well, that takes a lot of time to figure out and make sure that we. As I sit here today, that what I present to you is correct. As an example, this is all the write-ins in one precinct. I mean, there was over four hundred write-ins in just that one precinct. Overall, there was over eleven hundred, close to eleven hundred and fifty agents across Jackson County. Uh, to elect those leaders and, you know, we've had a lot of phone calls about. You know, who won, and I won't release that because everything is considered unofficial until today, when you officially certify this elective. And then, like I said, I know that some people are unhappy with me, but we want to make sure that we are absolutely correct. We noticed an error yesterday when we were looking at some stuff, so that's why, you know, one vote does make a difference. Every vote does count. And so, um, I have all of these tally books. Citizens need to understand that when the morning starts at seven o'clock. The election officials have already run a tape out of the machine to show that the machine doesn't have any votes on it. And then we did use a new software with our computer system to bring voters in and process them. You know what? It was a new system. I think it worked relatively well. Um, if we did have some issues, there was no issues that affected anybody voting. Everybody was allowed to vote. It was kind of a more of a practice for next year's elections and we've made some suggestions to the. Um, consortium that did this change and we'll see if they can make some minor changes for us. But, um, so today you are certifying, I have all of these tally books. I have an election canvas summary that I would like you to sign. We also um. Have certificates of elections that um, I would like you to sign. Certificates are done just by Mike, and then we also have abstracts of votes. This is what we call the first tier canvas. Next week I will be back with, with what I would call the second tier canvas. Iowa law several years ago said that no longer are citizens allowed to cross county lines to vote. And if you look at the Eastern Valley, they were also in Clinton County. We have voters that live in. Jackson County that live in the Dubuque School District, so we will be sending things to these adjoining counties. And Clinton County, um, as an example, even though it's small, we have Delwood, the Delwood School District is part of. Jackson County, so we will be sending things back and forth, and next week we will be finalizing the Eastern Valley. Election and there was quite a write-in campaign down there and we will be finalizing that uh. Candidate next week when we get the totals from Clinton County and we can certify the election as far as who the winner is. Um, and then at the end of the night, as I said, they start the morning with the zeros report. At the end of the night, then, there is a printout that comes out of the. Voting machines that lists all of the winners and as the. Ballots are being put into the scanner and it recognizes that that oval has been darkened, that it will take a picture of it. And um, that's makes it a lot easier and that's why this role is so big, but as those ballots are being scanned in, when that. Computer recognizes that the. Write-in position has that oval darkened in, it will take a snapshot. Of that, so it's easier to tally instead of, we call it dumpster diving, instead of the election officials having to. To get in and to look for all of these ratings, it makes it a lot easier to do that. So that helps us out and makes sure that the accuracy of what we're reporting to you is good and it just takes time and um. Like I said, overall, I think we had a good turnout, we had minimal problems. Um, we talked about. We're in, we, we talk about group soup before the election, we talk about what we do called mop up after the election, we make some suggestions as far as going forward. What needs to be changed, and we also give ourselves a, a grade. You know, sometimes. We haven't had a good election and we'll say our election was a C minus, but I think in this election, it was definitely a B plus. There's still room for improvement, which we always know that, but when you think about having. Fifty people, fifty election officials come and help us on election day that haven't worked and done this for over a year. And what they do on election day is actually very amazing that they can, you know, perform and do what we ask them to do. That to me is very amazing and I'm very appreciative for all those people that do help us out, so. Um, if you're more than welcome to look at all of this, so you can see what I'm looking at. But if not, then I would need a motion to authorize the board as canvassers. To certify and authorize board signatures on the true and correct abstracts of votes cast in Jackson County at the November seventh, twenty twenty three. City school election. As shown by the official abstract and further authorize the chair signature on the certificates of election. And authorize auditor Smith to forward the abstracts and certificates as presented. I'll make that motion.
Second.
I have a motion a second to authorize the board as canvassers as. Everything that Lisa said. It's want me to read it again, it's all here, but uh. Um, and for the, and signatures as required. Any further discussion? I, for one, Lisa had, did not have one complaint on any of your staff and I just want to. Personally compliment you and your staff for the work that you did. I know it's, sometimes you pull your hair out early and late and uh.
There was some challenges.
It's drying, it always is, and it's, and it's, uh, you're very dedicated to. And your staff is very dedicated to what they're doing, so again, we all appreciate that, so.
And for that, I thank you. Uh, there were some challenges with this election. We had uh. Monday was not a good day for us. We had, we had election officials that got sick and at the eleventh hour, we're. We're scrambling to find people to work, so.
It'll be a nice time to plug in the paper as we get ready for an election next year, then. People are interested in being an election official. To contact the auditor's office, because I don't think the training is uber intense. I have quite an experience to see how it works on the other side.
I'll let you finish your vote, how's that?
Yeah, so um, again, if there's no further discussion. All in favor, say aye. Aye, opposed, motion carried.
Yeah, as I've said before, I've gone to quite a few meetings this year and as I'm sitting around the table and visiting with other auditors across the state of Iowa. Jackson County really does a pretty good job. We talk elections all year round and we do. You know, when you're sitting in the back of church or you're at, you know, a store and you may run into somebody and you go, oh, you're retired. You know, we do a really good job of trying to kind of talk to those people, maybe in. December or a June primary, so we are very fortunate. I know there's a lot of counties that are really struggling with election officials. Um, and we do get, I'm on the radio, we do get some phone calls from that or from the newspaper. And so, yes, if anybody would like to be an election official, stop in, give us a call, we'd be happy to talk to you.
Thank you.
So thank you.
There's always a need for good quality.
Better do it than here. You know, I, what I would like to see is if we could get one person from a bank. One person from the newspaper, one person from here, one person from there, what we really need. And there, and as I've told my election officials, there is no job that is not necess, that is not important. As an example, down in Preston, they handed out six different ballots that. There were twenty six different ballots in this election. They had to hand out six different ballots correctly to all of the voters. So no job, you know, is considered a bad job. Every job is important, so.
Again, we should, we do appreciate it. So we have, the canvas is complete, is that correct?
It is.
All right. Any other board or commission reports?
I don't know if you guys saw, but the green space, they're moving the earth piece today. It's going down by the river. Down by the river. As you go north out of town, the wastewater treatment, but there's like a, a grass area.
Like to walk it, look to the path?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I did. I did call the recycle, I did call Dickmar to check on our last invoice and it was a timing. Thing with the Mondays, five Tuesdays and five whatever it was.
Yeah.
Um, in the month and. I suggest, and she suggested maybe we just back off to every other weekend present. So we're gonna try that for a period. I said that was fine, we'll try that for a period and uh. As long as we don't have a mess down there and it's auto overflow, there's none of them nearly full, so I just wanted to pass that along. Also, we have a. Um, I think that I was told that was one of their trucks that was coating our new concrete out here, so I might have a discussion with them then.
That would be wonderful, thank you.
Any other business before the board? I have a motion a second to adjourn. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carried, meeting adjourned.